This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, today's June 25th, it's one minute past six. This is the June regular meeting of the Southampton School Committee, which we delayed by two weeks to get in year-end transfers. Five members of the committee are present along with our superintendent, business administrator, and building principal.
Thanks.
The first item on the agenda, Norris reorganization, we are going to delay that in the order, we'll take that up under new business, letter F. So first item for tonight is approval of the minutes of May 14th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second?
The motion made by Kim, seconded by Jen. Any discussion? I'll just note that my name is spelled wrong. That's all right. I wasn't here. Having no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Public comment? Circulational warrants announcements, of course, that will end it. Principals' report.
Okay, in your packet you have the principals' report for June. Our enrollment has not changed. We still have 481 students with two out-of-district students included in that number. Under student life, I have meteorologist Dan Brown visited our third grade classes at the end of May. Kindergarten classes celebrated their eggs hatching with a chick party on May 30th. Our arts-in-the-park event was held on May 27th. Field day for students in grades K through six was held on Monday, June 9th. I don't know what happened with my editing there. We held a step-up ceremony for grade six students June 12th. Preschool held their end-of-year picnic at Connet Park. Kindergarten visited the Southampton Fire Station, Library and Police Station as part of their community helpers unit. Grade one visited Stanley Park for some outdoor activities. Grade three also visited the Clark Chapman House here in town, and they visited Storden. Grade four students went to Westfield Starfires game. They also walked to Bank ESP in Southampton as part of their financial literacy Savings Makes Sense program, which is a great little community event. Fifth graders visited Five Wits in Albany, New York, and grade six visited Sunny's Place in Summers, Connecticut. And there was so much going on that I may have missed something. Some of the academic things. After some great work with Assistant Superintendent Michael Fredette, the middle school ELA team has chosen Common Lit 360 for their ELA curriculum in grades six through eight. Mr. Hodgson and Mr. Smith from Norris served on the team, and we're looking forward to professional development and implementation for the school year 25-26. And under staff news, we have a few staff members retiring this summer. Para-professionals Sandy Klitch and Kathy Costello. Also retiring is Johanna Keefe, grade one teacher, and special education secretary slash admin assistant Brenda Tebow also retired this month. These employees have, well, with Mrs. Costello, Mrs. Klitch, and Mrs. Tebow, over 50 years combined experience at Norris, and then if you add that first grade teacher, it's probably 80 years' experience at Norris. So, a lot of dedication to our school. It was sad to see some of them go. I think they probably wouldn't have done that if we didn't have budget cuts. So it was a little bit difficult on the last day of school, but we want to wish them well, and we will miss them all.
Questions? My only question is, school choice is listed as 40. What's anticipated to be when we start the new year?
Well, we're going to take up the three in sixth grade, and we're going to add two in kindergarten.
So 39?
You're the math guy. I would say 39, yep. 39. I'm not good thinking on my feet with the math.
Superintendent's report?
I'm thinking about getting an abacus for Principal Duda. So the report that I presented and shared has a little FYI at the top. The Senate final FY26 budget was shared in the folder for the school committee. Those are live links, so you can take a look at those budgets, and there is the change from 25-26 Senate final. One piece of good news is that the sped transportation costs are going to be funded at 75%. So that is an increase from what was projected and what has been in the years past, around 44%, I believe. So it's a sizable increase, and it certainly will have a positive effect. The nurse leader position was discussed as a stipend position, and the position was posted. I did get feedback from the nurses at mid-year to ask how the position was going. Was it fulfilling the responsibilities that it was meant to fulfill? Was professional development happening as it should have happened? And the feedback I received was relatively positive. People had good things to say about Sam Pease and the work that she was doing. The nurses were happy with the support that we had received from Michael Fredette in preparation for the school year that was, and that will continue into the 25-26 school year. When the position was posted for the stipend, there was only one applicant. It was Sam Pease again, so later in the agenda, there should be a motion to, yeah, support the nurse leader position approval. Just an FYI, the towns of Southampton, West Hampton, and Williamsburg all worked on a grant to hire a municipal energy manager. I was asked by the town administrators if I would sit on the hiring committee and then the oversight board. I'm glad to do that. So that position is going to be a shared position, and there'll be more information forthcoming on that. The next piece of the report really focuses on advocacy with the struggles that many districts, including ours, is facing with respect to budget. There's been advocacy efforts at the state level and at the local level. I have written letters, various school committees have written letters. We've attended events, including the Ways and Means Committee at UMass in the mid-year. And then Margaret Larson and myself, Dawn Scaparotti, Principal Hoats, and two students from the high school went to Northampton High School. We were invited there. Seven school districts were talking about the challenges that we are facing as a regional and as a rural district. The presentation was kind of led by Alisa Cologne Garcia and Keegan Butler, grade 11, grade 12 students that sit on the school committee at Hampshire. They did a really, really nice job presenting the realities and the challenges that are being faced by our district with respect to transportation costs around the regional realities, around sped costs. And I don't know, Margaret, if you wanted to speak a little bit, because you were one of the ones on stage in the hot seat. Secretary Tutwiler was in attendance, and he was very receptive to the message, and I think those advocacy efforts had some effect.
I think so, too. I think that the most important aspect of it was the advocacy of the students. So there were a few, you know, adult presenters, but mostly it was students, and I think that that had an impact. I was just very impressed with all of them. I just, you know, I was basically on stage for declaration, because the students really did the work.
I agree. I mean, the students actually at Northampton High School, the youth commission is a student-led group, and they organized this event. They advocated with the state to get Secretary Tutwiler here. He attended the Ways and Means meeting at UMass, and then he canceled this event in, I think it was...
March.
March, yeah. And so they kept at it. They kept bothering, they kept advocating to him, and he came back. And he was really gracious in his attention, and the students were really impressive. I mean, it shows the leadership that our two students had, but also that this generation of students have around getting involved and being part of the process. So it was really an excellent opportunity to see our students in action, and I think it had effect.
Yeah, Lindsey Sabados and Joe Comerford were there as well.
That's correct. So that was an excellent opportunity for advocacy, and the rest of the report is really focused on the work that the business office has done. Dawn will speak to some of that, though. We're focused more on 25-26 than on 24-25, et cetera. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the work that the Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell is doing in conjunction with the governor. And that work is really focused on the uneasy uncertainty and the fear that many demographic groups in our schools are feeling, based on executive action at the federal level. And the counselors at the various schools have had some conversations with principals, principals with me, and they were worried about what response can be given to students and their families who are in fear that their group is going to be targeted for negative outcomes, if you will. And the Attorney General has shared many resources around know your rights and reassuring our students and their families that Massachusetts is going to welcome and include all students in our buildings and support and protect them as we are charged to do. And so there's not much we can do in Washington, but there's a lot we can do locally, and that is the work that has to happen. And as we can see tonight, many of you are here for other reasons, but similarly engaged and active and sharing the message and the support for education here specifically and generally in Massachusetts.
Questions? Chairs' report. We completed the superintendent's evaluation. We're going to bring that up later, under letter E, under new business. There will be a transition at ADC this cycle, and the next due-up is Southampton will chair that committee. So more to come on that. Hampshire Regional School Committee update?
We approved some great field trips. We had a lot on our agenda that's very similar to this, and we read six policies and approved them, which we probably need to start doing a little bit more of that here, because I know we have some policies that were written in the Stone Age.
PTO update?
Yep, PTO had their last meeting of the school year on June 10th, I think it was. They've started their planning for the fall, and one of the things that was brought up, and I don't know if anything has happened since that meeting, but in light of the failure of the override, they are talking about having some sort of a school supply drive over the summer because of classroom supply lines being zeroed out. They would think that that might be a way that they could help in the current situation.
School council?
Yeah, finalized the school improvement plan, which looks awesome. And so I'm not sure when...
I'm going to present it in August to the school committee. A little tweaking I want to do, but thank you.
Collaborative for Educational Services?
They're meeting tonight, so I'll be there. I'll provide the executive summary at the next meeting. Their executive director, Todd Gabz, is stepping down from his role. He sent out an email indicating he's spending more time in the classroom. He's taking a position, I believe, as a principal in Chester Elementary School.
Oh, wow.
Wants to be back in the classroom. Is an educator by training, and I think some of it, too, is they've had a very, very rough year, fiscally, as many areas and districts have, and they had to go through massive layoffs as well. So I think he's feeling it might be time to have someone else take the reins. But the work continues to work, but the discussion at the last few meetings has been around budgetary issues and staffing around that.
Select Board update. We're in the process of closing out the year. There's a meeting, another meeting scheduled for Monday night between Finance and Select Board. School Committee will be on that one. That's more to handle the deficits that were created in this existing budget that we're closing out, which we're going to talk about in the next subject. So we'll go in greater detail about that shortfall there. That's it for them. So Budget-Finance Team update. So we're going to, I'm going to turn it over to Dawn and the team in a minute, but basically, I think the way this is going to go is we're going to get an update. There's going to be a lot of information in there. There are going to be some required votes that are needed. One of them is listed under line A, under new business. But as we go along, I think first we'll kind of explain everything, give us a picture, and then we'll go back, and I believe there's a series of five or six bullet points that we need to hit on. So, Dawn?
Okay. Everybody moves along so quickly. I always slow things down, but I'll try to go quickly.
Well, this is the important one. This is where we want to spend the time.
I want to understand, so just do what you got to do.
Do you have any copies? I do not have any extra copies.
Is there a way to project it, or make extra copies?
You can have my copy.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. If we start with the first page. If you start with the first page, this is just really to show the FY25 column and what the school committee voted on. This is merely just to show that you did have an FY25 budget of $6,562. There was town revenue, non-town revenue of $931 applied, and the town contribution, these are the ones that are highlighted in yellow, the town contribution was $5,631,506. And then from that, there were state, there was some state aid, and then the school committee votes on this other section. And you voted for $25,000 from the Foundation Reserve, nothing from school choice, preschool revolving. And so that's just the latest stage of where the funds were planning on supplementing the budget. And then the next ones are the legal size paper, and that's where we actually ended up, or where we're projecting that FY25 will end up.
So for right now, the conversation is regarding the shortfall in fiscal '25 that we're trying to close the books on.
Yes.
Which is $330,000.
So this is just for ease of presentation, so you can see where the shortfalls are. There's a shortfall of about $40,845 in the staffing line code, and that's primarily due to the substitutes that are hired to cover various maternity leaves. Because you're...
This year, we had three maternity leaves.
Two maternity leaves and an illness, yeah.
Yeah. Two folks out on using their available bank sick time, so that drew down their salary lines.
Yes.
At the same time, we put long-term subs in, which doubled the impact.
Yes.
Which is why we have that $40,000 shortfall.
That's the primary driver of that. And then the next one is sped tuition services and transport is projected to be over about $257,000, and that's primarily being driven by the fact that contract services were considerably over the budget. The budget was $8,000, and contract services was $200 and something thousand. So that is the full rationale and reason for why we're over in that line. That's the major component of it. And then Buildings and Grounds is over by about $36,693, and that's primarily due to unforeseen maintenance across a number of areas, correct?
Maintenance and repairs, correct.
Maintenance and repairs.
Which I believe $20,000 or $22,000 is related to our antiquated boilers.
And then the administration line code is under about $18,000, and we're looking into that to see where that is. I think that it's in two places. Some supply lines were underspent, and we'll come back with some more information on that. We're really focused on why you're over budget as opposed to under. That contributes to 5% of the whole issue, so I'm skipping over that. Oh, that could be me.
Yeah, it's behind you.
Sure, late writing news on the budget, but we're going to ignore that. And let's see. Then we go to the instructional non-salaries over about $11,000, and that's basically due to technology, hardware, and software purchases that were a little bit more than was budgeted. Then the other one is school committees over $3,000, and that's because the Massachusetts Association of School Committee dues were not budgeted. They will be for next year, but they were not budgeted. I want to say with our predecessors. So we're trying to anticipate those areas that were not budgeted this year that need to be budgeted for next year, and we believe we've captured most of them.
So that gets us to the shortfall of $330,509.
Yes. And then the next page...
Just a pause.
Yes.
Any questions at this point?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next page talks about how we're going to cover that shortfall. So we're going to cover that shortfall by moving things from the general fund, where everything gets charged, off to various grants or special revenue accounts. And this is how we are proposing it be done. So for school choice, we had budgeted $309,622 to be used, and as of the beginning of June, $271,000 was going to be used, and we anticipate another 76. So all total, we expect to use $347,908 to offset the budget. Now, the $309 was projected, and so you'll see over in this column where you see some red, this $38,286 is the amount over what was planned that will need to be used from school choice. So that's...
So that's going to be part of, as we go down this list, that's going to be part of what hopefully will be one big motion. We need to authorize the additional $38,286.48 to be spent from school choice, if when we get to the bottom, everything's in agreement.
Can I ask a question about this, though?
Sure.
All right. So that $309,622 was what we anticipated our school choice in was going to be. It wasn't what was sitting in a revolving, it wasn't what was sitting in account.
That's correct.
So are you saying that our school choice in exceeds the $309,622 that we put in, and we have this other $38,286.48?
Not quite.
Came in this year?
Not quite. But the $309,622 is what was anticipated to come in. That's what came in, and the other amount is what you had in the balance.
We had, we're sitting on a reserve.
No, I understand that. So what I...
What was that balance?
Okay, so we're pulling it from the reserve, not because we got additional school choice money in this year.
Right. Yes. And I don't want to give you that balance right at the moment, because I'm not quite sure. I have to look at something else before I give you that balance. But I can tell you that we will need to use $347, which is $38,000 more than we had in our plan.
That was authorized.
In the budget, that was authorized.
For '25.
For '25.
For '25.
For '25. And before I go through the detail, I think I should just say, of the $330, all of these things, which we will go over in detail, will bring it down to $219,000 or almost $220,000 over budget. And then we still have a plan to bring it down further. But that's what each of these is going to do.
Yep.
Okay. Now, this next one, the Foundation Reserve, we had planned to use $25,000. The school committee had suggested at the beginning of the year, or at the end of last budget season, that we use $25,000 from the Foundation Reserve. I don't know if you remember when Bradley was here, a couple of, you know, when we were looking at the budget for '26. The idea was we could not use that $25,000 in FY25, because we were putting everything that was in that Foundation Reserve, $120,000, towards '26. So I'll try to say that again. What that really means is we can't spend that $25,000 on this year, because we've got to hold it in abeyance for next year. And so that will require a motion to say the school committee originally voted '25. We're now going to vote to use zero in this year, FY25. Is that clear as mud, or is that...
Well, I think, so my memory, I agree with what you just said. That was what Bradley indicated to you.
Yes.
I disagree with Bradley, because the original Foundation Reserve was $154,000.
Mm-hmm.
So we committed $25,000, which brought us down to the $125, because originally, we, we'll go back even further, we pledged $25,000 as the funding source for the alarm system and building security enhancements. We didn't need to use that, because we got the state grant. So I believe there's an encumbrance out there that needs to be reversed that will print to me, but we have...
Do you want me to follow up with that?
Well, we only have until Monday to figure this out. So it'll eventually fall out.
Okay. But we'll go forward with the plan that we're outlining if the school committee agrees to it tonight. Okay.
I think eventually $25,000 will come back to us. I just don't think we have enough time to chase the paperwork and justify it to Bradley.
Okay. All right. Then the next one is the preschool revolving account, and we had authorized the use of $50,000 that was in the preschool revolving, and we are projecting that we will be using $71,249 of that. Only partial pre-K teacher gets charged to that revolving account, and one para is offset as well.
Later on, we're going to have a separate lengthy discussion about pre-K.
But just suffice it to say that we will need to use an additional $21,000 out of the preschool revolving. So that's the number you see in red. We're going to need to have a vote to use an additional $21,249.62.
Okay, hang on. So does that impact the $40,000 for fiscal '26 that we put in the budget?
Potentially, no. Meaning that we're, right now, we're anticipating, this is going to be part of the conversation, we're anticipating collecting $97,000 in receipts, 92 or 97. So that 40 would be...
So moving this to cover the shortfall in '25 isn't going to adversely impact the fiscal '26 budget?
Correct. But there's more to it.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct, and stay tuned for additional conversation on preschool.
Okay. All right.
Okay, then circuit breaker. We authorized, or the school committee authorized, $183,000 of that '11. We will be using all of that, and there will be no...
Circuit breaker otherwise listed REAP?
No.
Did we jump over something?
No.
No, right after preschool revolving is circuit breaker.
Oh, yeah. All right. Yep, yep.
And then we've got rural aid from various years. The reality is, you are supposed to use rural aid in the year that you receive it, and that's what we will be doing going forward. So we need to use all of the rural aid up. We had, the school committee plan was to use $117,963. We're still going to plan to do that. But it does leave about $68,000 remaining, which you'll see down at the bottom, as a suggestion for additional relief. But we're going to go forward with that plan of using the $117, and...
So just on the rural aid, generally, when is rural aid certified? When are we made aware of what that dollar amount is?
Rural aid comes in, I'm going to say...
Yeah, I think it's October or November.
I'm going to say October.
So it comes in three to four months after we've set the budget.
That's correct.
But we need to spend it within five months.
That's correct.
That's right.
That's correct.
What we were told by Jay Sullivan and his team was that the practice of rolling it over is not supported.
Well, I get that, but how can you budget for that?
How do you stack it into the budget if we don't know what the number is, but when the budget has to get done?
Well, you just have to do it.
We estimate, based on the prior year, is what practice has been?
Yes. Yes.
And then it's up to the Senate, the House, the governor, to determine what actually gets funded. And that's the advocacy work that's been happening. We need to fund it at X level.
Now, rural aid is where you have a little bit more leeway, in that it can be used for just about anything. A lot of principals will use it for things that they have not... A lot of principals will use it for things that they have not seen, that they need, you know, that wasn't anticipated in the budget. Here, we're using for, we're using it to move things off the general ledger onto rural aid. So it's not necessarily in addition to, it's to fund what's in the budget.
Okay.
Okay. So then sped 240. Sped 240 is, as the name would imply, it's for special education. And that needs to be used within, I think that's a 27 months. And we authorized 130,000. And we're going to need to use about 150,000, which means we'll have to ask you to authorize an additional 20,628 for this year.
And what's the current balance in that?
Hmm, let's see.
I think the balance is sitting in fiscal year '24, right?
That's correct. And that's one of the...
But that's still only...
That's one of the grants that, that we have been working on. And our forensic work in the accounting side of things had to go back to '19 to make sure that we were closing out and moving grants forward. So this sped 240 is, it's one of those grants that's a consortium. So all the districts are together. And when it's written, historically, we're not going to do that moving forward so that Southampton has Southampton's and West Hampton has West Hampton's, et cetera. But we have funds in there. We're identifying exactly how much. We should have that answer tomorrow.
Yeah, I think we'll have it tomorrow.
But as of yesterday, when we met, you had a ballpark idea.
Yes.
And you're waiting to certify it, but roughly, what do you think it is?
What was that ballpark idea? Hmm, let's see. I'll get, I'll get back to you on that. I'm not quite sure. I'll have to look that up on another piece of paper as well.
So there's two things we have to look up.
Yeah. The balances. You did ask me to be prepared for balances, but I'm not.
We can't approve it if we don't know we have the money.
So what if any impact will it have on fiscal year '26?
It will not have any impact because every year we'd get an allocation. So we would just be using up what we have available.
Gotcha.
So the circuit breaker that we have built in, no, sorry, sped, we're not on circuit breaker yet, we're on sped 240, right? All right, so we didn't, all right, so for sped 240 for '26, we built in 130. So we're still assuming we're going to get that?
Yes.
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 Will that number change once we start doing it as individual schools versus a lump sum of everybody?
No. No. However, starting in '26, when Michael Fredette, who writes these grants, writes the grant, it won't be a consortium grant.
Yeah, right.
As, as Vito said, but I just wanted to point out that they're 27-month grants. So next year, we'll still be spending out of the consortium.
Correct.
Until that 27 months goes by, it'll still come into Hampshire and be transferred to each school. So starting with '26, it'll just come, when the, the money will come directly to the school once it's drawn down.
Yep.
To each school. But the 27 months has to pass before that happens. Okay, then the next one is this REAP. And Vito, help me out on this.
Yeah.
REAP, when, how often do we have to spend that one?
REAP is another, another...
Isn't that, is that 27?
Yeah.
Yeah.
REAP is another one that you have a window of time beyond one year.
Yes, to spend that.
To spend, yes.
And so that's why you see '23, '24, and '25 listed. You hadn't identified '23 and '24, but because we identified that there are balances there that we need to use up, we are putting '23, '24, and '25 towards, towards that.
I mean, the bottom line really is we're looking at all available sources of revenues. We are closing out grants appropriately and using them as they should be used. And what we're trying to do, or not we're trying, what we are doing is making sure that the practices that we are putting in place are in line with the regulations that drive the grant, or the, the claim with respect to circuit breaker, or sped increment, or rural aid, where it has to be used in the year. We're, we're doing things the way they're supposed to be done. And that's the challenge that we're facing right now, is that we're cleaning up that stuff and trying to move forward at the same time.
Right. Now, I don't think that the, the school committee actually allocates REAP and any of these other grants, but, so there's not an action you would have to do per se on those. But we're just, since it was organized a certain way at the time of the budget, I'm just letting you know that we're using it a little differently.
So that's why those aren't in red?
That's correct.
Because that doesn't have to be in the motion?
That's, that's part of the reason. And also, if you look at, if you look at just '25 REAP, it was, we were going to use 56,500 of it. And you'll notice we're only going to use 45. So we're actually 10,541 less than what we expected. But because we're using the others, we're over. But you do not have to make a motion or do anything about that. It's just basically letting you know.
But we need to, we need to see it in order to get from the $330,000 shortfall to the bottom line.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. So then if we go on to sped 262, which is again for special education, but 262 is elementary, preschool and then elementary, correct? And so there, we're going to need to use all of the 75 that had been allocated and some additional money that we have found in the previous years, sped 262. Then when we go...
Another 27-month one?
Yes, yes. And then Title I, Title II, and Title IV, as you see there, these are available to us in that the person that we had who was doing the grant reconciliation identified amounts that were still available to spend. And we are using them and using them up so we don't have to send any money back to the federal government because these are federal grants.
And that has been confirmed by the powers that be that we can still use that even though it's...
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And, yeah.
Yeah, the only, the only concern we had, one of the concerns we had was around REAP because we lost our administration rights to it. And that happened whether it was a year ago or two years ago, depending on the different districts. So when I first got hired, that was one of the first tasks that I took on was renewing our registration so we had access to that money. And it took us, I think until this past month or so.
Yeah, like nine months.
Yeah, to get all five districts renewed.
It's a bureaucratic nightmare.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. But bottom line is, we have now access to REAP as we should. We all, we know now what we can draw down on these grants. We know now what we have to use in, in rural aid. And we're using all of it to the best effect, as Dawn is outlining.
So you'll see then Title I, Title II, and Title IV. And then after that, it's ARPA. ARPA, John, you know more about ARPA, but the, the point is that there's amounts being charged to ARPA. And we did through December of this year. But there was nothing in the, you know, budgeted in our documentation that took that into consideration. And therefore, that's why you see that 33 over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So basically, after the application of all of those offsets, that's 88,000. And you take that away from the 330, and you get 219. So now we're over 219,900. Let's call it 220, 220,000. And then these are the potential additional offsets that we can use to bring that number down further. Those offsets total 132,261. And we did find some additional money in Title I that was remaining, so we're going to use the rest of that, almost 9,500. And then in rural aid, I mentioned that, that balance has to be spent by the end of this year. And so we'll, we'll use all of that and apply that to the expenses. And then extraordinary relief is something that we qualified for this year. It's, it's from circuit breaker. And that also has to be spent in the year in which you get it. So we just got it, what, a month ago?
Mm-hmm.
And they have, and you have to use it by the end of the year. But they expect that because that's all, that's based on your special education expenses. So we've already told them that our special education expenses met the threshold and then some. And that's why we got the money. So they're saying you can use that to offset some of your special ed costs. So then we go, that's an additional 132. And so that brings us down to 87,653. That is what we had communicated originally to the select board that we needed. That's why this documentation is put together this way. Because we had to, I think last week or the week before, identify to the select board how much we would need in, in aid from, from the town in order to cover this year's budget. And so that's what the 87 is. But wait, there's more. You go down to the schools, the summer school is a cost that can be charged to sped 240. And we have an additional 28,402 that we can use. So it brings it from 87, which is what we told the select board a couple of weeks ago, down to 59,250 that we would need from the select board. When we, when we spoke to the, to Bradley and to the, to the select board, I wasn't there that night, John, but my understanding was that there was $4,000 identified from the reserve fund and another 83,000 from an encumbered fund of some nature. And so they were planning on being able to cover the full 87.
That was the recommendation from the town accountant.
From the town accountant.
It was tabled for a lack of supporting documentation.
Oh, yes, that's right.
It's coming back up Monday night.
Oh, yeah. And so Monday night, we'll be providing this documentation. And then that'll bring us down to needing from the town 59,250.
You're still going to pay 87 and use the 28 for '26.
Well, that's up to the school committee.
What was the question? I didn't hear what Jen said.
I said, if the documentation supports that they were okay with the 87,000, why...
Just to clarify, a number was sent from Central Office to the town accountant of $87,000. Bradley used that number, but carried out in an email, I'm going to use this as a placeholder. We need the documents to back it up.
Oh, this document? I thought you meant the town needed to look at the documents to see if you had the money for that.
No, no, the town wants to say, okay, you say you're 87,000 short, prove it.
Gotcha.
Show us where. Here's where this is.
Gotcha.
And then, because if the town doesn't find it, then it just, it's a ding on the free cash, which reduces the overall money. I mean, one way or the other, it's got to come out of a pocket. And what, what we, what I was told yesterday was that this is fiscal year '24 money that needs to be spent now. And because we're running in that 27-month cycle.
This sped 240, 28,000?
Correct, which is why summer school, which is substantially special ed.
Correct.
Needed.
Right.
Just, is justifiable.
I was just saying, if this was $28,000 that we could kick to the '26 budget, I'd rather do that. But if you're saying it has to be spent...
It does.
We have, we do have money coming for, we're going to get to that. Money to potentially, I think there's going to be a recommendation to restore.
I'll believe it when I see it, but yeah.
Stay tuned. Fifteen minutes from now.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to be, but just to Jen's point, I mean, is there, John, are you going to use your crystal ball here with the select board?
What's that?
If we reduce the school of choice from reserve by the 28,402, draw down the sped 240 so that we're only drawing approximately 9,800 out of reserves from school choice if free cash and the select board can't come up with the 87,000?
You can propose it. I mean, I wouldn't...
But the select board didn't vote on the 87,000. It was, right, Bradley said...
That's a crystal ball part.
Yeah. Okay.
And then there's, there's some late-breaking news, which is in order to meet the curriculum for next year, they're purchasing across all schools some curriculum for math and English, what is it?
ELA.
Oh, ELA. And that portion for Southampton is about $17,000. And so we were going to ask for that 17,000 to be charged to school choice. So it doesn't add to this deficit.
And right now, everybody else has ordered at Southampton, and right now, we'll not have this material for next year.
Correct.
But everybody else will, so...
So we would like to be able to order that. And, and if you would authorize it to come out of school choice, then teachers would have it in time to be able to prepare their curriculum this summer. Yeah.
What does that leave us in school choice once?
Like, what's the balance of school choice?
Well, that's, that is, that's something I'm going to get you in a little while, I think.
A little while tonight?
No, tonight, I'm hoping. I have to look at another document if it was sent to me. And if it wasn't, I'm not going to give it to you. But, John, do you remember when Kyle was talking about it last night? He was looking on his computer what that was?
I want to say there's $130,000.
Yeah.
Because we were anticipating 240 coming in.
Yeah.
But that assumed 46 school choice. And now we're down to 39. So we'd have to adjust that. That means only 195,000 will be coming in next year. There's only 39 school choice children for next year, at the minimum. 39 times 5,000 is what's coming in.
But we're only reducing it by one kid. No.
In yesterday's conversations, we were using the school choice number of 46 in our calculations.
And now we're 39.
Which is fine, it's next year, the money hasn't come in yet.
Right.
I'm just saying for the numbers we were doing.
But the, the, one of the things that we did talk about and that I've talked about previously is what's called sped increment. And so sped increment is you have school choice students that are here that receive special ed services. In the past, the claim that was done was not as robust as it could have been based on the service grid that the students have, the services they receive in the building. Michael and Amy have done a fantastic job of reviewing IEPs and services, et cetera. And so just for example, in sped increment, in '24, we received 59,516. For sped increment '25, which we'll receive in the coming year, we will receive 166,485. So that's a difference of over $100,000. So sped, excuse me, school choice is going to reflect that in the upcoming year.
Yep.
And so that is the conversation I wanted to have about A, school choice, but B, sped increment, and C, need in the building, especially related to special ed services.
So wait a minute, so are you saying, let me sure I understand this, so if we've got 39 school choice kids, that's 195,000.
Right.
Then we're going to get this additional 100,000 in sped increment. So our school choice in, if you lump those two things together...
Correct.
Is going to be 295.
Over the course of the year. It'll, it comes in monthly.
Right, but, so it's like 110,000 more than what we accounted for in the fiscal '26 budget.
Yes.
Correct.
Assuming all those students do indeed come and last through the year, correct?
No, no, no.
That 195, yes. That other increment was based on this year's numbers.
Yes. It lags.
Oh, it lags.
It lags a year. And then it comes in monthly.
Okay. So we have more coming for school choice than we thought we did when we made this budget?
And the reason that is, is because the claim was made in...
Okay.
It is more robust and precise than has been made in the past.
And I think that claim was just put in, what, was it March or April?
Yeah, it's due in March. Hold on one second. I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Right here.
Yeah. Well, that's extraordinary relief.
Oh.
So, since you've brought that up right now, and we're just going to have a conversation, and we can just keep going until everyone's satisfied with everything. Do you have a recommendation tied to that, directly related to why that money's coming in? And do you have an ask?
My, my recommendation, based on the, the fact that the override didn't, um, didn't pass, based on the advocacy we've received from, um, from teachers, from the principal, uh, from the sped director, my recommendation would be to look at the reductions that we've made, and I think in this instance, there was a retirement in, um, of a sped teacher that wasn't gonna be replaced. My suggestion, or, excuse me, my recommendation would be to use sped increment, school choice, to bring that position back. Now, there's other cuts that were made. However, based on the information that I've received from the sped director, um, conversations I've had with the principal, I think the neediest population in the building is our special ed students. If we proceed without doing this, then the services that those students in the building, um, need are gonna be provided by the remaining sped teachers, specialized teachers, excuse me. And so that will thin out the, the hours, if you will, that they have available for the program. My recommendation would be to bring back that, or to, um, bring that position back. Now, that being said, you have a teacher retiring at a certain rate after X amount of years, they're paid at a higher rate. We hire someone at a lower rate, we use the sped increment, we bring the position back, we're able to provide the same services as last year in special ed. That would be my recommendation.
So we're not offering that person that retired their position back? It would be hiring?
Well, that person retired, so, so yes, we would be posting for the position that was going to be absorbed.
Okay, but that, if you're gonna hire someone at a lower cost than what you were paying the person who retired, that doesn't use the whole hundred and ten.
Well, well.
Well, you've got benefits, you've got...
So will it? So that's my question.
Who's saying benefits?
I said it.
No, that's a town expense.
That is a town expense, yeah.
So, so theoretically, I mean, so...
There would be more, there's more money. Right, we're not gonna use the full one here, because I don't, I don't have the pay scale in front of me.
Right.
But I don't think that a teacher goes up that high end.
Well, my, so my question is, is there something, is there anything else that we had to reduce that we can restore?
Just, to be clear, though, we have to make sure that we're using the funds appropriately.
Yeah.
Right, so sped increment.
Can only be used.
Would be used for sped. Now, we could use the balance, uh, for another special ed cost in the building, and then shift it.
And then shift the money from that to something else.
Sure. So, so the conversation could be, use X amount of dollars to, um, offset the, the, the budget and bring back something beyond what I recommended.
And is that something that we can do tonight, or is there a reason that we couldn't do that tonight?
Uh, I mean, there were...
We won't know the amount that we can use to offset something else.
It's because you don't know who you're gonna hire, so you don't know the base.
But, but the decision, and in my experience over time, in the various districts I've been, when the reductions have been made and revenues have been realized after the fact, then, um, a, a pink slip could be withdrawn.
Yeah.
So, or...
So of the hundred, of the, the identified, intercept, that's not intercept, what's the word? This money.
Sped increment?
Increment. Of the, do we have, do we have a firm number on the increment?
Yes.
And it is?
One sixty-six four eighty-five.
All right, a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
But I wanna, yeah, sorry.
But we, we already have, a portion of that was already in there, because whatever we got last year, we probably rolled forward.
Correct.
So the net new is?
One oh six nine six nine.
Let's, let's call it one oh five, okay?
All right.
So the committee could authorize the use of a hundred and five thousand dollars, of which first you identify, I'm assuming a one point oh.
Correct.
Special ed teacher.
Sorry, that's my recommendation, yes.
And, you know, for all intents and purposes, it would be a step one, unless extraordinary circumstances were there, but if you have step one, whatever that salary is.
It could be base or step one masters, and that would be, if it were step one masters, it'd be seventy-four thousand three twenty-five.
So call it seventy-five.
For next year.
Out of one oh five.
It's a thirty thousand dollars.
So that, that we can give them discretion to find the appropriate spot. So we don't actually have to identify the line item tonight.
Correct.
We can say, come back in August, what are you doing with that third order, if you have to have special ed.
And if I, if I could, kind of enhance the recommendation, if that's the mindset, then I would suggest, as you were saying, Kim, that we would use that to, with another sped cost in the building, which would then allow us possibly to, um, bring, um, an interventionist position to point seven five as opposed to a point six.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, right now, all our special ed paras are in the general fund, right? Well, I don't know this, but I'm guessing there's something over there in the general fund related to special ed paras that could get reclassed out of the general fund, which then frees up that money.
Correct.
To then be used for a, a cyclical position, which may be the, well, the interventionist. Wouldn't that fall into special ed?
Yes.
No.
Oh, no, no, it's a tier two. No, that wouldn't. But the reason it's important, the reason it's important, though, is because if students don't get that intervention.
Yeah.
Right, they might then.
Need an I.
Need an IEP, right? So there's an opportunity for us to, uh, be creative with our use of this, um, one oh six, one oh five, right? With respect to the need in the building and the cuts that we've made. And I think, John, what you just said about authorizing the use of a hundred and five to bring back.
It has to bring back a T, it has to restore.
One point oh.
Educator at one point oh.
And then the balance defraying a paras something in...
It's gonna be legal, you know, of course, it's gotta be a way to do it. We're not, we just need that spelled out.
Correct.
For a vote, yeah.
But we're not in a situation of...
I hope it does.
We're not in the dis, uh, situation of supplant versus supplement, right, with this?
This is not a grant.
Okay, so, so that's not an issue.
Yeah, it's not a grant.
So you could take the balance, say, we're gonna say, what are we gonna say, thirty thousand, is that what we said? No.
Total of a hundred and five.
Okay, minus seventy-five.
Of which we think seventy-five's gonna go to.
All right, so thirty thousand. Theoretically, you could take thirty thousand, apply it to another special ed cost that we already have in the budget.
Yep.
And then take that thirty thousand to be used to restore something that we had to cut because the override didn't pass.
And thirty thousand is more than enough to cover a point two-five interventionist.
And I did, well, that wouldn't be special ed, though.
But, but you missed, you missed, yeah, yeah.
No, we're saying.
Also, I had two paras go out the door that retired that I'm not replacing. That's gonna be part.
I get it. Yeah, I get it, and, and that's the conversation that we need to have, right? But I just want people, and that's why I'm looking you in the eyes, I want you to understand, we're thinking about what is the greatest need in the building.
Yeah.
And that's why the first thing that I thought about, and the first conversations I had, and the first input I received, was around the special ed position. And then, the conversation was around that intervention, uh, position and the, uh, integral nature of it with, uh, early literacy.
Is it possible to give us a rundown of what every grade level looks like as far as number of teachers, number of paras sped that is working for each of those grade levels? Do you know what I mean? Like, I know that first in kindergarten, or kindergarten is going down to three, first is going down to three, two has already been at three, correct? But like, do they all share a sped teacher? Is that sped teacher there? Like, where is the sped teacher missing?
Well, for next year, it's still, it's not up in the air, but it's not, I don't have it solidified yet, because I didn't know what was gonna happen tonight. And the paras are only assigned to students who have IEPs, so it's not like I say, you know, except kindergarten, the four, the three kindergarten classes each have.
Right.
A para.
Right.
Other than that, the paras are deployed based on IEPs, on what it says in IEP.
So the sped teacher that retired was servicing what kids?
Uh, fourth and fifth grade, I believe.
Okay, so...
So what we were planning to do for next year was the special ed team leader, the neuro, one of the neurodiversity teachers, and the other neurodiversity teacher all sort of helping to take over those, those group, not those groups in fourth and fifth grade, but all kinds of shifting was going to happen with the teachers.
And then the two sped paras were also fifth and sixth grade, correct?
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay.
So that sixth grader, they're, they're moving into seventh, right? So they, that para was gonna be redeployed anywhere.
Well, it wasn't a one-to-one.
No, they're just general, like...
Yeah.
Right. So I think what, what, what happens now is that once we vote on this, then Vito and Eliza go figure out and make a recommendation to us of what they plan to do with it based on the needs of the students.
With the additional thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question, my question then would be, um, if, 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 if there's an approval to use, or if the motion is to use the one oh five to return the one point oh, and then...
Immediately move forward with the one point oh, post it.
Post it, we post it.
The other thirty, depending on how the motion goes.
We figure out, and then transparently, we communicate that, but there's not, no need for another approval.
Right.
Well, it depends on how they word the motion.
Okay. It would be awesome if you worded the motion so that we didn't have to come back for another approval, and we could...
So under discussion, listen to the motion, and if it doesn't, God...
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we need to let you do your jobs.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a very important part of our relationship with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So on this, what, anybody else?
I just, I just wanna make sure I have a clear picture of general staffing for the building, and that, like, yes, we're staying, yes, to this one, you know, full-time sped teacher, which I'm not saying is a bad idea. I just wanna make sure that, like, every grade is gonna be as equally assisted as it possibly can be. Like, are we, every grade still has three teachers, or are there some grades that are only having two?
Oh, no, every grade still has three teachers as of right now.
Okay.
Unless we restore something K and one, but every grade K to six has three teachers.
But we're still not gonna have a L, like a K to two reading specialist, correct?
That's the interventionist you're talking about? Is, is that the reading specialist?
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, that, that, that's the other piece to this.
We have a full-time reading intervention teacher right now, and, uh...
Point six.
Point six.
And, and last year, before the cuts.
We had two full-time.
We had two point oh.
Yeah. Right, it is point six math, as of right now.
Point six math, one point oh.
That's personality.
Language or reading? Yeah, but, but to be clear, the only certification is a reading intervention, it's a reading certification, so...
But, but to Jennifer's point.
Yep.
Before the school year ended.
Yep.
We had X number of special education teachers.
Yes.
Which is one. How many did we have?
Five.
Five? We'll say it was five, one retired, we're down to four, we're restoring that cut, so we're going back to before. We had two people doing interventionists, one in math and one in...
No, we had two reading interventionists and two part-time math interventionists.
Which equals three point oh then. Full-time, two part-time.
And what do we have right now, way after the cuts?
One point five.
One point six.
One point six.
One point six, all right.
So in my brain, early literacy is a huge issue.
Absolutely.
And so I would want to have as much full push towards having a full-time K to reading interventionist, or as close as we can get to that.
And, and that would be the intent behind the use of that thirty thousand. So we take the point six.
But...
And we add it, and bring it up to as high as we can, maybe it's a point eight.
I don't know if I can have this conversation without saying names.
The point six is math, though.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, the, the, the need in the building, as you've just articulated.
Right.
Is early reading intervention.
Right.
Right? But I would say, for me, and the sped director, and the principal, the one point oh sped teacher.
Right.
Is preeminently more important.
Okay.
High-need students drive our data.
Right.
We need to take care of them.
Right.
And, secondarily, using that balance of thirty thousand to restore as much as possible of that reading specialist, maybe it gets us to point nine, I don't know, I, I have to look at the numbers, I, because that has to do with where you are on the salary scale and all that stuff.
Right, 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 right.
But that, my recommendation, and I, I love the enhancement to it, is to use that one oh five to the best effect by returning a one point oh sped teacher and as much of a reading specialist as possible.
Right. Jen, are you good for a moment?
Yes, yeah, no.
We can, we can come back to it.
No, it's not, it's not a coming back to it, I'm just trying to, without saying the question that I wanna say, which I don't think I can say, so move on, and I'll ask everyone.
Yeah, in my experience, we're talking about FTEs, we're not talking about individuals. Is that what you're saying?
And we, in a, in a public setting, we can't give any names other than...
We have to talk about it.
We can only talk about superintendent in public.
Lucky devil that I am.
Any, any other, quick, I'm, first, the committee, and I'm coming, I'm coming over here in a minute.
Okay.
The committee?
No, I'm good.
To the extent, Elizabeth, you wanna say anything as the president of the union, and, and you don't have to, but I'm just giving you the floor first if you want to.
I mean, I can say a little.
Sorry.
No pressure. So thirty, it's a hundred and fifty.
I think what we would wanna say is whatever, it's basically what you've already discussed. A lot of cuts have happened, but even like beyond people, um, going from four to three in one grade level is a change. A certain teacher moving grade levels is a big change, not having a budget is a big change, there's so much, um, that's changing for next year. So I feel like the most that you guys can to impact all of the academic learners, um, that, that's what's necessary, and I feel like that's being discussed, so...
And I appreciate that, Elizabeth, and just so, you know, for a full, again, full transparency, um, we had a meeting, and with, with the union leadership, and we talked about, um, what priorities there were in the building, and what, shh, if they had their druthers, right, what they would want to do with the budget. And we, I've received emails from teachers, from parents, if we can do X, that would be amazing. And so I've been balancing those things, that collaboration, with the reality as I see it as a superintendent, and I feel the best move right now is to bring back that one point oh sped teacher, excuse me, special ed teacher, and then to use the balance of that one oh five to bring our interventionists up to as close to one point oh as we can. Then we have two, I would say, reading interventionists, that's the data that we need to really look at, because that's what's, um, showing the need, as opposed to math, which are better scores. And, to your point, Jen, from grade pre-K to three, that's where we make the most improvement.
Right.
The most gains in literacy. So, that's kinda my rationale. Um, I have listened, I have responded to every email I've received, and I, I told people, I can't make any promises, however, if the revenues show themselves and we can do something, we are going to do it. And this school committee has shown their receptiveness to that and support of that, And this school committee has shown their receptiveness to that and support of that, of our kids, despite the challenges we're facing. And I think that says a lot about the people that are sitting here and the people that are, you know, in the offices, you know, working.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, on this...
Clarification, so we eliminated... Hi, Stephanie Latour, para at Norris kindergarten. We eliminated one full-time reading interventionist, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And now we're talking about thirty thousand dollars to bring up somebody else. I'm confused, because that's not going, that doesn't make sense to me.
We had three interventionists, three FTEs, right? One of them was a shared point five, point five math.
Okay.
The other two were reading interventionists. The point five, uh, reading, uh, math interventionists were cut.
Yep.
And one of the one point oh's was reduced. So, what we're doing is bringing that reduction as far back to one point oh as we can. So, going from three to one point five, one point six, back to one point nine? I don't know the, alls I have is thirty thousand dollars, that's all I'm talking about. I can't confirm that I'll bring that one position back to a one point oh, I can't say that right now. But it's going to be closer than a point five or a point six.
I get that, I get that. My only, right, my only other thing is, is being in kindergarten and knowing how it works, twenty-one students, is you're going to have more IEPs, you're going to have more intervention problems because we're not going to be able to service those kids the way that we can with sixteen in a classroom.
I get it.
So...
I get it.
We're going to be in the same boat if we don't have interventionists and we still have only three.
But, bringing a special ed teacher back?
Yeah, but in five, yeah, but...
And bringing the intervention position as back to one as we can?
I know, I know, I know.
I'm feeling like Solomon here, right, cut that baby in half? So...
Dylan?
That's what I thought, so I'm kind of confused.
Dawn?
This is, this is a plan, and a good plan for a year, correct? Because you're getting that sped increment this year. That is to say, it will be coming in and available to spend in FY twenty-six.
Correct.
It's not something you can count on every year.
I'm not talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right now, we're trying to minimize, to the extent, at least I am, to the extent possible, minimize the cuts that we had to take. And as soon as July first starts, we need to start, regardless of what else is going on, we need to get next year's budget done in time. And Norris needs to be the first one to the town with its department budget, not the last one coming in. And here's where it is, and at that point, this is the true expense of running the school. Here's what we need to restore.
Yeah.
Right? And maybe we found some efficiencies and we got some, whatever the case may be. Now, here are all the offsets we can apply. This is an offset that we're applying, and it may not be there the following year because this offset is only coming in because we do participate in school choice.
Yeah.
Right? So, later on, we're going to talk about potentially opting out of school choice tonight, going forward, or at least having that discussion, so there's a lot of moving parts here.
And I think, to that point, really, it's being communicative with the community. This is the effect if we cut a kindergarten position. This is the effect if we don't have two interventionists. This is the effect if we don't have a sped teacher at the upper grades in that way. And, you know, how Lisa deploys her resources, that's a principal's purview. So, she's going to look at need, and maybe that goes back to early childhood. You know, I don't know what the grid looks like at the upper grades. You know, to John's point, sixth grade's leaving. How much need is out the door, how much services are going out the door to Hampshire? And then, what do we do at Norris to best meet the needs of our kids and support them? When I was interviewed, that's what I said we were going to do.
The reality is, if there's a spike in IEPs, there's going to be a spike eventually in out-of-disreplacements. And that's a cost we can't control. Once that's awarded, it's gone, and it's whatever, a hundred and seventy thousand, I mean, it was a two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar issue in this budget.
Correct.
Right, so, there's an educational piece to the, to the voters. On lack of funding and what this causes, Elisa?
I just want to say that, even though it doesn't feel like, it may not feel like to everybody that this is the right choice, right, we're picking special ed, why are we picking special ed? But, we're plugging up a hole that needs to be plugged, regardless of where it is. Everything is so important, but the money is in sped, right? We have to spend it on special ed, so that makes the point to me. Also, with increasing class size and kindergarten in first grade because of the reduction of those teachers, I totally understand and see, it's either bring back a teacher, which we can't do, or give more money towards intervention for literacy, of course, that's huge and it's very, very important. We have to hit them when they're young, when they're in K and one. Our scores already in first grade always show that our kids are lagging behind in the first part of the year, and then they make up for it in second grade, so we have to keep the support in the lower grades. But I also want to say that eight years of me being principal, now this is eleven, I was fighting for a math intervention, right? We wanted math intervention, it was always, can we get one, can we get? Finally got two part-time math intervention teachers, a really good program, bridges, really good professional development, and now our math scores are good. But, we also have to weigh, like, so that's going to go away maybe for a little bit, but our teachers are fantastic and they're doing a really great job with math, and maybe we can get that back at some point, but, you know, if you had asked me two weeks ago, what did I want? I wanted to have both reading and math intervention. But at the same time, I see how important it is to keep the literacy in the younger grades, especially with the increase of class size. And like I said, we're plugging a hole because we have, there's nothing else we can do.
This is a triage situation.
Yeah.
And that is the bottom line. And again, I can't say this enough, we have collaborated with the union leadership, we have listened to parents and teachers that have sent emails, and I truly feel like this recommendation is the most solid we can make in a really not-nice situation.
And I'd like to add one more thing, and that is, we just spent fifteen or twenty minutes talking about how we were going to make up the over-budget situation of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars this year. So, we just spoke about that, and now we're talking about really working hard to try to add back. And so, I think if you just, you know, understand how, it's just such a balancing act, and we are short this year. And even in the face of that, we're looking at, how can we possibly bring something back?
Right, and part of this is, you know, again, nothing on you, Dawn, or Vito, but the, your predecessors, right? All these funds that are in older years, that had they been applied or been in, you know, perhaps our general revenue ask number would have been properly stated. But it was so convoluted.
Yes.
That when we finally started getting cleaned up, and oh, well, now here's the real number we have.
Yeah.
That was probably more the harder sale, how come in one year there was such a big jump? Well, nobody wanted to listen to all the, all the pain and issues that have been uncovered and painstakingly fixed, you know, the fact that we're drawing down grants from two, three years ago. Now, I mean, they should have been spent then.
I know.
And not using it, but we're cleaning up the garbage.
We're doing our best to clean it up, I agree.
I really appreciate all the work that you are doing in central office and Michael and Amy. It's been a really fantastic team to go back and take little bites out of that all.
Thank you.
So, maybe I would suggest that maybe we do this in a couple tranches. The intent of this single page here that shows an ultimate bottom line of negative fifty-nine thousand.
Yes.
Is if we approve this as is and any action that needs to be taken, i.e.
Yes.
You know, as it is, then this is the document that will be shared with finance and select board Monday night.
Yes, and is this, in your view, is this sufficient?
I think this is enough, I think with the conversation behind it all, we can walk them through it.
Okay.
But that, you know, obviously, we're authorizing additional expenditures from accounts where we're being told by Dawn and her team that there are, all these entries in here, Dawn and your, Dawn, you and your team are confident that the existing balances where they are are sufficient to meet these needs, and in some cases are in excess.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, again, the recommendation down on the bottom, which I think is the one potential issue, but, you know, I would put it forward that we do it, that we shift the twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-two dollars for summer school out of the general fund into the special ed two forty allocation, which gets down to the shortfall of fifty-nine thousand two fifty point five eight. So, I'll make a motion to approve this as stated and to authorize such adjustments as are listed on this page to resolve the three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine-dollar shortfall down to a fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents shortfall that we are asking the town to absorb within its general fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Do we need the details on each of the red items in your motion, or you want to take care of that in a different motion?
I'm just saying, because we've already read it into the record as we went through it, and just...
Alright.
So, it's from the document that's titled, Offsets per FY twenty-five Approved Budget.
Correct.
And John, in terms of discussion, and you're on the select board, so, you know, just give me some, you know, some guidance here. When we say we're three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars over, that's really prior to the offsets.
Correct.
And some of these offsets were already planned.
Right.
So, it's not as though you went into it willy-nilly.
It ties the two documents together.
Yeah, but just so that, that the select, you know, people who aren't as used to being on the school, you know, understanding the school budget, you never plan to be three-hundred-and-thirty over, you are always going to be using some offsets anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? Two noes?
Two noes.
Two noes. Motion passes three to two. Second item is, do we want to adopt the superintendent's recommendation of the use of the hundred-and-five-thousand in...
Sped increment.
Increment, sped increment funds.
Yeah, so I move that we authorize the use of the hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar sped increment to restore a one-point-oh sped teacher and as much of a reading specialist as possible.
Understanding that the thirty thousand needs to be shifted because the reading specialist... Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second discussion? Does that...
I understand that.
No, no, but is that, the wording of that motion work for you?
Can we add that it be, the first priority be for the reading?
No, I'm sorry, what?
The K to two reading interventionist.
Well, that's the only option they have, they can't use the money, the thirty thousand for anything else, the way the motion was made.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear Kim say that part.
Yes, one special ed teacher, and then the balance roughly thirty thousand to be used to restore...
As much as possible.
The reading interventionist.
Can I change that motion a little bit?
Sure. I didn't hear you say reading.
So, to restore a one-point-oh FTE special education teacher, with the additional thirty thousand to be used to offset others' special education costs, savings from which shall be applied to restoring the reading specialist as much as possible.
Okay, what he said, what he said, that's the motion. Thank you, that's the better way to say it.
Is that reported?
Alright, so the, the motion was amended, do you second the amendment?
Yes.
Everybody in favor of the amendment? You're not approving it, we're just approving the wording.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, now discussion on the new motion. If any? No? Okay. We'll vote now on the amended motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes by the... Okay. Next, I think we have a couple more votes here. I have a cheat sheet here somewhere. I'm sorry?
Your nurse leader job?
No, no, no. So, now, let's go to preschool.
Okay. Continuing on the, being the bearer of all news, the FY twenty-five preschool expenditures are before you on the top sheet. And you can see the personnel, the FTE, and the salary associated with each. In addition to running the preschool, there are preschool supplies, a van driver, and van expenses. And all of those total two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents. Those are, those costs are covered in the following way. Preschool revolving, sped two sixty-two, and the bulk of it being charged to the general fund. It looks like this, this document, and it says FY twenty-five preschool expenditures. So, that's just to get the lay of the land as to what that is this year.
Well, this year it's two eighty-three all in.
Yes.
And the funding source is ninety-two thousand from revolving, fourteen thousand and change from sped two sixty-two. The balance, one seventy-six, is being carried by the general fund.
Exactly.
To get to two eighty-three.
Okay, and then next year, this is what it would look like.
And we're on the next page titled...
The next page.
Fiscal year twenty-six, full FTE projected preschool expenditures.
Yes. And, in the same way, that, those costs would be, they would go from the two eighty-three, or almost two eighty-four, to two ninety-one, almost two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. You see it on the left side of your page. On the right side of the page is a situation whereby, if you were to...
Well, maybe, is this another recommendation?
Yes.
This is, this is a...
Potential.
A potential recommendation or a point of discussion?
So, let's start with discussion, okay, and then see where it goes.
So, in the conversation that we've been having around, around the funding of preschool, the recognition that the revolving account does not fund all the positions, nor is it robust enough to run the program without support from the general fund, right? We all know that early intervention is a requirement for our, for students that need it, and so, school, excuse me, preschool is mandatory for us to offer, to provide services. The conversation that we've had and the recognition that the funding of the program doesn't cover the salaries, et cetera, of the employees, brought us to a place where we looked at how we might find savings there, and the discussion that we wanted to put on the table was around the use of paraprofessionals in the preschool program on Fridays because they only meet four days, they meet with students four days a week, on the fifth, there's no students. So, there's a potential for savings if the paraprofessionals weren't working on that fifth day. So, this was just, again, what we were trying to do was identify revenues and identify savings.
And this area was one of the, regardless of, is one of the idea, not one of the ideas, it was one of the suggestions for review that was forwarded.
To us.
To us by certain parties, so we looked at this.
Yep.
So, just, so, I just want to check one thing here.
Yeah.
So, when we, when I discussed this yesterday with the team down there, I honestly don't have a full comprehension, working knowledge of pre-K. So, I asked for clarification, which Michael provided, and so I'll just share this with you so you guys know what he sent me. Integrated preschools are mandated to provide publicly-funded early intervention services for students with disabilities beginning at age three. So, we can't eliminate pre-K. In Massachusetts Public School Integrated Preschool Program, class size is capped at twenty students with one teacher and one aide, and no more than five students with disabilities. If there are six or seven students with disabilities, the class size may not exceed fifteen with one teacher and one aide. And right now, going into next year for the pre-K, we have forty-two?
About forty.
About forty?
Yeah.
And they're in four groups, A and P, um, twice, so we're at, we're at ten with one teacher and one para.
One teacher, two paras.
One teacher, two para.
But it's rolling, so the kids are coming in, it's not like it's going to stay that way.
Yeah.
It will...
The numbers are going to adjust.
The numbers are going to...
So, right, so the current staffing is in excess of what we're required to do, so we're good with that. We're, you know, not that I'm saying we have enough staff, but, but the other takeaway is that on Friday, there are no students in the building for pre-K.
Correct.
And right now, there is a potential savings of three-point-five because one para only works every other Friday.
Correct.
Right? So, and three of them are on Friday, so that'd be a point one, point one, point one, and a point five.
Right.
So, if we were to say, no preschool paras on Friday, that would be an eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six-dollar savings that's in the general fund that could be redeployed somewhere else.
Correct.
Within the budget.
And this is, this is purely a financial statement, right? It doesn't speak to the role of the paras on Friday, it doesn't speak to the fact that they are helping teachers prep and prepare, prep and clean, and get ready for the upcoming week. So, as other teachers and other programs are being affected negatively, this would affect our preschool teachers, and the paras especially, because they are the ones that would be reduced. But, there is a cost savings there, and that's what we are sharing. I don't necessarily, after the other recommendation and the, and the response from the school committee, I don't necessarily know that there's enough meat on the bone to make a recommendation there. The only thing that we could talk about is the cost of preschool.
Well, that's step two.
Okay, sorry.
So, step, so, sorry. Again, since we're on discussion, you know, I mean, eleven thousand, eleven thousand. The follow-up question for me would be, and I'm not expecting the answer tonight, is what would that, saving that eleven thousand there, where's it going to get redeployed within the budget, and does that make sense? And I don't think anyone's prepared to answer that tonight. So, the second piece is the fact that we are... that we are currently, so the preschool program is costing $290,000 as currently laid out for next year, of which we will collect roughly $92,000 in receipts at an offset. Preschool is a revolving account. It should be self-sustaining. We'd have to quadruple or triple tuition in order to get close to breaking even. And first pay, that's 10 equal payments, and the first payments has already been received. So I, I don't know about... We need to address, we need to determine, we need, I think, the committee at some point in time, relatively soon, needs to set a policy on how much we want to collect in receipts for the preschool. Is it a quarter? Is it a third? Is it 50%? Is it 100%? Set the policy, and then once the budget's there, that tuition gets reset every year as it grows. If we want to, because the more we collect in the preschool, it's just going to free up. And this year it would have been, we would have had so we pulled $176,000 from K through 6 to support or augment preschool. And if we didn't have to do that, what cuts wouldn't have had to be made if that $176,000 stayed in the K through 6.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
One is, what does preschool cost right now?
$240 times 10. So $2,400.
$2,400.
Not everybody pays, and there's a slight scale.
Right, so that
That makes sense. Um, the second question is, I'm curious about the burden this reduction in staff would place on the classroom teacher for pre-K.
I, I would suggest that we take the $11,000 savings just as an informational point. And unless administration comes back to us with
I'm just more curious about what, you know, I mean, because this obviously came as a recommendation from people.
An interested body.
An interested body. And so, is that an interested body aware of a, of a burden that this might place on the classroom teacher? Because I assume that they are using their, their paras on Fridays.
Can I ask a question about preschool?
Well, is, does anybody have an answer to Margaret's question?
I mean, I feel like Nito explained how much the paras are used on Fridays to help the teachers. I'm sure the teachers would say, yes, it's a burden because they're cutting, they're pasting, they're gluing, they're organizing, they're filing, they're cleaning, they're supporting, they're doing some recess duties. If we don't have people Monday through Thursday, we definitely use them on Friday.
And if I could just add to that and what I said previously, when I was working in, in West Springfield, we had a similar conversation about Coburn Elementary School where we had a preschool program. And similarly, on Fridays, there weren't students. And so, the paraprofessionals were there and working, and that was one of the questions I asked as we were going through some budget woes. And the similar answer was, they are important to the work we do to end off the week and clean stuff because that's important. We're preschool in that space. And then, prepare for the next week. Cutting, doing that stuff that, as an English teacher at high school, I never did, but I have my own cross to bear there.
Putting out, putting away the centers from this week, pulling out the centers for next week. You know, making sure everything is just right for those little guys. And then, they have time in between the classes, but you're changing over from the morning class to the afternoon class, and you need a lunch. So, yeah.
Um, so like John mentioned, there, the only ones that pay for preschool are the peer kids, not the intervention kids. Do we get reimbursed for the intervention kids, though? Do you know what I mean? Like, like my son had started, my youngest started preschool. They all went through this preschool program. I love it, I'm not, not getting. And he started halfway through the year, but because he came from early intervention for his lack of speech, you know, he was one out of the three I didn't pay for because he had a learning disability that needed to be serviced.
Yep.
Do we get reimbursed for those kids that are coming in off of early intervention that need to receive services? Do you know what I'm saying? Because they are not paying.
Are they choice?
No.
No.
But they're not paying.
They would be claimed on Circuit Breaker. They have an IEP and they have services. But I don't know.
But they're not, they're our students.
Yeah, right.
So who, no. Was it in the Chapter 70 formulas?
Do you know what I mean? Like, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, raising the tuition cost to four times the amount for the six out of 11 kids, and, you know, five of them are IEP kids. Do you know what I mean?
Twenty out of 40, exactly.
Do you know what I mean? I'm trying to see if that, like, that's
I would suggest, and, and
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, I, I hear you. I, I know what you're saying. I just, I feel like a claim is only made on a choice student. Right, to the sending district. I don't know if... I, I would say what John said is correct. It's probably in the Chapter 70. It's through how it's funded. Because there are kids, there are Southampton kids. Jen, to your point there, it may, we, it may sound logical that, say, whatever the percentage is, 40, 40% of the children at any point. So the maximum that could be on IEPs would be 40%, whatever that percentage is.
Right.
To me, that's a general fund number. Right, so we would have to fund that because more than likely, we're reporting in our Chapter 70 equation, and we're getting the money in that way for it. So the only thing that we, I would think should be on the preschool revolving account is the atypicals. Like, that should be sufficient.
Oh, right. No, I understand that. I was just didn't know if there was somewhere that the non-atypical kids were
It should be part of Circuit Breaker, according to my friend Google.
Well, Circuit Breaker would only be school choice.
No.
No, Circuit Breaker is
Yeah, I'm thinking the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so Circuit Breaker, something called SBMP, which I don't know anything about, and IDEA grants. All of those can be used.
ID, okay. And I'm, I'm thinking that the next chair should really make this part of the August/September meeting where we really get into the meat and guts of it.
I'm just going to say that maybe we can look towards allocating those things, like, more appropriately to saying like, okay, this piece maybe for X amount of things should go towards preschool, do you know what I'm saying?
I got an answer for you. So, if you don't mind if I read it. Good. The Circuit Breaker program is a state reimbursement program designed to help districts offset the high cost of special education. DESI sets an annual reimbursement threshold at $52,419. Only the portion of eligible costs above that threshold
Are reimbursed.
Is reimbursed, at 75%. Right. So, it's not fully reimbursed. Right. And so what I was thinking about was the sped increment was a choice in kid we would claim. So it's not a claim, it's part of the Circuit Breaker. So to your point.
You have to hit the 56 first.
But you gotta hit that 56 before you get anything. And then it's not 100%, it's 75%.
At 75% over 50, or 75% of everything? Over
Above and beyond 50. Above the threshold. Kim?
So, in possibly doing, you know, if we were to do this, the paras aren't in on Fridays. Is that a contract thing? Like, I don't know, I don't have the para contract in front of me. So, is there anything in the para contract that says their work week is this to this? And this is, you know?
I don't think it gets that granular.
Okay.
I don't think.
Preschool is its own beast in the contract. They follow our contract, but they have their own things. Like, none of us work half a day on a Friday, but they do. But it's not stated in the contract. So it's very gray area.
It's a unwritten past practice that's happened.
Yes, just like their sick days and their personal days are all calculated because of their full-time position isn't full-time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I think if we were doing this for any other reason than to shift dollars to somewhere else where cuts, this would fall under the override field we're doing these cuts. Whatever we're doing now by contract, we're only doing for a year because by contract, we're required to restore all this funding a year out. Otherwise, I'm sure, for all the right reasons,
We'll hear about that.
We're gonna, yes. For all the right reasons, I mean, it's not happening September 1st. So, the, where is it?
So for now, we're kind of taking this under advisement? Is that?
That'd be my recommendation. And we, we spend more time studying this. I, I ultimately think it needs to get, I mean, first of all, to get my support, I'd want to know where this money's going. Right, and, and they're not prepared to answer that right now. Right.
You said you'd like to know what?
If I was to vote in favor of this, I'd need to know where the money's being redeployed. Right? If it's being redeployed by basketballs, then I'm probably not going to go for it.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's not going to happen. See me afterwards. Just the fact that you didn't retire makes Jacob's life happy. So, I'll get you some basketballs if you want. That's what I told him. But I, but I think the tuition piece and that. Because I don't know when the last time tuition was adjusted.
I think 2021.
Yeah. So, I mean, it should be part of an, we should have a policy and this is how we do it, and spelled out so that we all know it going forward.
I can see how other districts do.
Right. Okay. We voted on that, we did that, talked about, okay, so that's the end of that list. So next is the nurse leader position. And you're seeking approval of the posting? No, the posting was made. Yep. It was just approval of Sam Pease in the nurse leader stipend position. Which is already budgeted. Which is already budgeted and which has gone to the other school committees because we moved this date. This is the last school committee.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was on the last item.
Go for it.
On the budgeting stuff.
Sure.
Is there any other accounts that we want to look at withdrawing money from for the purposes of supplementing the fiscal year '26 budget?
At this particular juncture, no. Because we've taken what we know for, you know, the extraordinary relief which has to be used now, the increment which we just found a use for. You do have a balance we've, that looks like of about 135. Is that what it is?
School choice?
In school choice.
About 101 after me. Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Oops, sorry.
Yes.
Before the superintendent's vote.
And also, the, the one other motion which I don't think was included.
The curriculum?
Yeah.
And we'll come back to that.
Okay, all right. But to answer your question.
Right after we finish answering his question.
Okay. I, I don't believe that there is anything else that we could, I think we've really gone through it very carefully.
And I, I think it's based on what we know right now. I think in the August meeting, will be another opportunity. Because we'll be farther, I mean, right now, we're a week before, Monday, we close the books. Right, and then we get to the 15th of July to make adjustments. And then everything's like locked. So then by the August meeting, we should have, these are the available balances. Here's what the committee, and then the committee will have real numbers, or better numbers
Yes.
than tonight to decide, okay, we can put this under, not put this on. The other request we had is that Southampton, as previously stated, there is a curriculum rollout, which we can go back and add details to. But Southampton's portion is to the tune of about $17,000, give or take. All the other schools have ordered it, and we have not because it was placed on hold for this. The recommendation for right now to get the order in before June 30th is to allocate $17,000 from school choice. To get the order in, to get it back by September. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it more than 17?
Let's see.
Less than 18,000.
It's, it's less than 18,000.
Yes, less than 18,000. Up to 18,000. There you go.
Okay.
To get, to get the order in by June 30th so that it's in the hands at the start of school.
Yes.
And in alignment with everybody else.
We're doing a warrant on June 30th. And hence, if, if we get that approval tonight, we can go ahead and put that on the warrant.
Does anybody want to make that as a motion?
Well, I just have a question if the numbers, so you said when you guys were working on numbers yesterday or whatever, you were using the number of 46?
That was for the, yes, we did.
So, are our numbers, is, are Don's numbers reflecting the 46 number or the actual 39 number?
Neither one. Because Don's numbers are reflecting the unencumbered reserves that we've been carrying as a balance.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Make sure that we're not giving away money we don't have.
So it'd be that 130 minus what we already pulled out, the 20-something.
Yes.
Plus the 5,000 times 39.
For next year.
For next year, yes.
Is there a motion to spend up to $18,000 out of school choice funds by June 30th for the purposes of purchasing the required curriculum? Well, I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion.
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
So. Okay, so is this for the, is this for the new ELA program that they voted on?
So, all of this paperwork is in the hands of Michael, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I think it's Common Lit ELA curriculum for sixth grade.
It's what we looked at, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, sorry, it's not just ELA. It's Bridge, it's Bridges, yeah.
So are you talking about?
And Intermath.
Intermath, yeah.
Right, it's grade six math curriculum, it's grade six ELA curriculum, and it's Bridges' math curriculum from K to five that we need to reorder.
So is that consumables, is it like workbooks and stuff that the kids get?
So the only thing that's new is the Common Lit ELA grade six materials.
So for that, that's all of the teacher stuff, plus whatever the students.
And that was the collaborative work that was done horizontally, all sixth grade, with the seventh and eighth grade teachers.
So they all have the same curriculum.
Correct.
So if we don't do this, then our sixth grade doesn't have the new sixth grade ELA stuff.
Right.
And our math students don't have the consumables that they.
Yeah, I strongly recommend that we are in support of this.
Is sixth grade getting a new math program too, or just the new ELA?
It is a new, it is like year three of the new math program called Intermath in grade six, which is also the same in middle.
So it's consumables for all of the grades. Some of it's Bridges, some of it's Intermath, and sixth grade is Intermath.
So it's really about curricula and the supplies that go with them?
Is there any way to use not the consumable parts for the kids in at least the fifth and sixth, or the sixth grade's math part, and use the online portion to do their stuff to like?
Well, I think they do use a lot of the online portion, but when you're using the books, the workbooks, you're either copying it and spending it on copy paper.
But the workbooks are all online. I know that because I've dealt with Adeline's stuff, and it has all of the sheets and everything in there. So I'm just questioning whether or not they can, they have their laptops, if they can do all that on their laptops and forego the paper that is redundant to what they can have, they can get at online. Because I know they can do it all there.
I just want you to know that we do not just carte blanche, order everything.
Oh, no, no, no.
We ask the teachers, what do you need for next year? What do you use? I'm not going to order books if they're not using the book. So I can't say.
I understand.
I would say, and I'm not a sixth grade math teacher, but as a father of four, watching my kids do stuff on paper.
Right, and I understand that as well. In this extreme environment of this year, again, it's just, is that another way we can just chip a little bit more off?
I'm personally uncomfortable with that, Jen, because some students need that physical interaction with the paper, particularly for math.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question to ask, but you know, we, this has been a long-fought battle to have consistency amongst our elementary schools. And I know the principal of the high school desperately wants, you know, more consistency, so when students are coming in at seventh grade, they have that, et cetera, and so on.
And realistically, one of the things I talked about when I was first hired was the strategic plan and the ability for us to really have some horizontal cohesion across the elementary schools in preparation for seventh and eighth grade.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we don't use the curriculum. I'm just saying, they all have laptops. It's a way for them all to use the technology that they're already given in a more meaningful way. And those kids that do need the physical stuff, it is available to print, it is available if you get, order half the amount of books, I'm just saying.
I also want to say, which I forgot, it is also a change, and it's a new addition, the new addition, you knew I would think of it at some point.
She was sending it.
She's laughing, I'm like, talk to me someday, and she started talking to me. So, Michael Fredette is in charge of ordering the newest edition of Bridges across the, all the schools. So this, part of this 17,000 is so that Norris can be on the up and up with everyone else when it comes to the latest addition for Bridges, so that we're all the same. It's not like hundreds and hundreds of workbooks that we're going to throw at the kids. That's, if that were the case, it would be $60,000. So it's only to get us to where everybody else is in the better addition of Bridges. Because we purchased one that was close to being outdated, now it's outdated, and it's going to get us to where everybody else is.
And I am not discrediting any of that.
No, I know.
But I'm saying that my son definitely came home from third grade with four full workbooks of five pages ripped out of it.
Not used, okay.
So that's what I'm saying, is that even though they have them, they're not necessarily using them, we're giving them technology. I know once they get to the high school and stuff, all their stuff is online, all their math's online, everything is online. I'm just looking at any possible way for this coming year to save and scrim by. I'm not saying that one way is better than the other. I can't do math in a workbook, but I also can't do the math that you're teaching my six-year-old either, because that's not the math that I, my sixth grader, because that's not the math I learned. They're a different breed of student. So I'm just saying that there could be exceptions made for those kids, like Margaret said, do need the physical pen and paper, and I fully understand that, because I would be one of those kids. But I, more times than not, have, was getting my daughter's stuff that she needed from the full insane amount of information on that website for that math program.
Well, I can say for this cost of $18,000, it's definitely not workbooks that are not going to be used in third grade, because there's no way that that cost would be able to, we wouldn't be able to order workbooks for everybody. It's only for the new rollover of the addition.
So this is more, so this isn't for consumables, it's for like the teacher materials?
I don't have, I don't have.
I'm trying, I just don't understand. I'm getting two different answers.
Right, no, I understand.
What I'm seeing here on this one invoice that's for the Southampton School District, Intermath, six.
Well, that's different. We want to look at Math Learning Center.
The Math Learning Center, okay, let me see. Let me see if that was provided to me. I know it was provided to Pam by Michael. Let's just see if it was provided to me.
At the microphone.
At the microphone, you would.
This is because we're live streaming.
Okay, so it's the consumables that we use every year, but Elisa's really good about talking to the teachers about which consumables they use. So, for instance, I don't ever use Home Connections, but I do use the Number Corner books and the student book. And so she talks to us, asks us what we, what we use, and that's what gets ordered, excuse me, every year. And so, but now, they're also adding new teacher's manuals, because we were using the second edition, which is now not going to be made anymore, and it's moving to the third edition. And so, and it also has some manipulatives that have been changed as well. So that's where the cost is really coming in for this. The others, we use every year, and that just got added to this, but the extra cost is the new manuals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sunday. It is the transition kits, yes. When I didn't know what I was talking about at first, and I was talking about consumables, and then I realized it was the transition kits. That's exactly what we're talking about, the transition kit.
Perfect.
It's not consumables, it's the game boards, number corner change, and teacher's additions that they need in order to transition to the new edition. Sorry.
We got there.
We got there.
Thank you.
Wasn't prepared for that.
Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. And I believe that's the last one related to budget. Last one, right? Okay. And, did we act on, I forget, did we take the motion to approve the nurse leader?
Yes.
We did?
No, sorry.
We stopped?
We stopped.
Yeah, we got, all right. So is there an action on that? So is there a motion to approve the appointment? Motion made by Margaret, seconded by Dylan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So passes. Concession bargaining offer? Is that a mute? There is no offer. Right, so we're going to bypass that.
Yep.
Cafeteria compliance letter. Do we have a letter?
It's actually, it's in your packet, it's the Meal Charge Policy and Procedure Paper.
Yep.
So we had our cafeteria audit this year, and one of the things that came up is that we don't have anything on our website as a policy that talks about the meal charging, what is free, what is charged, what, where can we hold money, and things like that. Well, come to find out, after I was asked to come to the school committee with this policy that we wanted you to look at, there is already a policy, apparently, and it's in your packet as well. So I think Kim put both in there, the one that I'm being asked if you can look at.
Yep, okay.
And the one that's already in the file, EFC, Universal Free School Meals.
The one we're being asked to look at, the first one, do you know what that abbreviation is up on top? Is that EFC-1?, question mark?
That's because we were wondering if that's already EFC in the policy manual that's there.
Okay.
So I think, I think whatever's in this letter needs to be included in the policy. So if you, if the school committee.
Yep.
Would take some time to make sure that we're the same as the other school districts, I suppose, in the policies, because we were not in compliance, because we didn't have it available to them.
Well, I actually don't think we have the policy anyway. The things that are in here, this EFC and EFD that are in here, the source is MASC Complete Rewrite 2023, but, and the same for the other one, but it doesn't say anything here about Southampton having adopted it.
Okay.
So I think, what we had in our folder, though, I think we had an old one in the online folder.
Yeah.
That was from like 2010.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we're in the situation where there's probably, there is something. It's not this 2023 one, it's a 2010 one. So I think we need to probably, what we're looking at is whatever, this William E. Norris Elementary School Meal Charge Policy and Procedure, we need to compare that to the mask recommendations and put those things together.
Thank you.
That's what it sounds like to me.
That's what I, that's exactly what I was thinking, yes.
So it's just like a.
So this is informational, and then it'll come back to us for a first read?
I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you. The only thing that I would point out is on the, the first document that we have is, I would want to add in the last paragraph, at the very end, all it says is, any amount remaining as a credit balance at the end of sixth grade will be refunded. That's fine, but add, by when? By October of the following year, or I mean, 90 days after they close the school? You know, obviously, something that's convenient, because the, I'm assuming the cafeteria manager and food director, whatever that title is, director of the cafeteria, probably isn't here necessarily in the summer, so to allow sufficient time, but hey, this is when you should expect this refund coming. And I know in the past, there's been confusion about the sixth grade money now needs to go to Hampshire Regional.
Yes.
And that created an issue that we had to absorb within last year's budget.
I feel like it should say June 30th. Because it should, the money should stay for that year.
I don't disagree, I just, I, me personally, I leave it to administration to figure out whether or not that could actually be done if we close school on June 20th, late year. Does that allow sufficient time to get those refunds processed and out the door?
Does the state budget allow for free on-home free?
Okay, so Margaret will take this up on behalf of the committee to do the consolidation and offer a draft at the August meeting.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, wait, what are we on now?
So we are now on superintendent's evaluation. And in your packet was the form that was completed on June 2nd, and then shared. It is a public document now, it's been read and reviewed in a public setting, so I don't believe it's necessary for us to read all four pages into the record here, because it was done, it was done at the ADC level, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, unless somebody wants to read it.
The results weren't.
The only comment I have, Vito, is in the very first paragraph, about the number of evaluations that were submitted, and it says nine from Hampshire Regional, which looks like it's only half of Hampshire Regional, but it specifically said on the evaluation form, if you sit on two committees, to only do it once.
Mm-hmm.
And so I did it for Norris. And so there were actually more people in Hampshire that submitted, you know, so all of us who, because I think most people who sit on two committees did, in fact, do it.
Right.
Though otherwise, it looks lame. And I don't think we're that lame. We have our moments, but we're not this.
Well, I think there's certainly opportunity to reflect on the process this year, and to refine it as we move forward into the second year. Vito, where was this? Where was the evaluation shared publicly? What, public meeting?
Public meeting?
Well, the superintendent's evaluation is usually read into a public record somewhere, or do we just merely make it?
Each, each of the school committees have done this as an agenda item.
Have they just accepted it in written form, or have they actually read it into the minutes?
No, they accepted it in written form.
Okay, all right. Is everybody comfortable with that, doing that here?
Oh, this is a public document, it's in our, so anybody who wanted to see this could ask for it and get it, right?
Okay.
Do I make it by motion?
If you want to, go ahead. To accept the document?
To accept and adopt the document and take it to the public record. So moved.
There's a motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded by Dylan, seconded by Jen to accept and adopt the four-page superintendent evaluation dated June 2nd, authored or signed off by Tom Clary, Chair of the All District Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now we get to the good stuff. Election of Officers and Committee Assignments for 2025, 2026. The impact of this election will take effect at the conclusion of tonight's executive session. Is there, we need to elect a chair, a vice chair, a clerk, and then do committee assign, well, then we could do committee assignments tonight, or save that for the August meeting?
Let's do them tonight.
Okay. So let's start with, do we have a slate for chair, vice chair, and clerk, or do we want to take them one by one? I do not want any job for the.
So one by one.
Okay. Is there a, anybody want to nominate anybody or self-nominate for chair?
I nominate Kim Schott for chair.
Nomination for Kim for chair, any other nominations? Any other, any other hearing? None? Clerk to cast, motion closed. Nominations for chair, clerk to cast, one ballot for chair. So moved.
You're speaking English.
Yeah, I don't know what you just said, either.
What did you just say?
Wait, you have nominations, you call for nominations three times in a row.
Okay.
At the conclusion of nominations, you close nominations. There was only one nomination. So the motion is to close nominations, and for the clerk to cast the ballot for chair. And now the chair has been elected. Now we'll move on, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open for vice chair.
I nominate Margaret Larson.
There's nomination for vice chair, Margaret Larson. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I move that we close nominations, and the clerk casts one ballot for vice chair of Margaret Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you come to town meeting, that we get through the caucus. Nominations are open for clerk. Is there a nomination for clerk?
Jen, you willing to do it again?
I suppose so.
Okay, I nominate John Johnson.
Nomination for Jen. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, move that we close nominations for clerk, and that the clerk casts one ballot for herself as clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
We now have committee assignments.
Let's, let's, can we elect an ADC person first? Because I'm automatic, but we need a second ADC person.
Correct, so there are two ADC positions. The first one, by default, goes to the chair of the committee, which will be Kim, at the conclusion of executive session tonight. And we need an alternate. Is there a nomination for an alternate to, not an alternate, for a second to?
ADC.
I nominate Margaret Larson.
There's nomination for Margaret Larson as the secondary to ADC. Any other nominations? Any other nomination? All right, actually, no, we're doing appointments, we don't have to do nominations. So that's an appointment. All right, so all in favor, Margaret Larson, holding the second seat at ADC. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Liaison to Hampshire Regional School Committee.
I nominate Jen Johnson.
I oppose that nomination. No, I'm just kidding.
This vote will put you on the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
You willing to accept it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I don't have a choice. Listen, I don't have to do chair and that, so I'll give you that.
PTO liaison?
Kim, do you want to do that again?
You want to do it all together? All right, we'll do, all in favor?
For Jen?
That one I want to get locked in, everything else.
Everything else we can do all together.
We need a PTO, School Council, Collective, Collaboration for Education, Select Board. I'll selfishly take the Select Board's spot.
All right, all right, so John has Select Board.
I'll do School Council again.
Margaret wants, anybody else want any of these things? Speak up if you do. And then what is there, collaborative? Dylan, do you still want collaborative?
Sure, I will do it if someone else wants it, that's fine.
You want PTO instead? Because you're getting something.
So, I don't want to be selfish, but can I keep PTO?
Yep.
Chair's priority.
All right, so we have.
Kim for PTO, Margaret for School Council, Dylan for Collaboration, and myself for Select Board. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done.
Wait, one more thing. So according to the all districts agreement, we have to vote to delegate the authority to us to carry out the contents of the agreement at ADC.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.